Good evening. I'd like to call this regular meeting of the Northfield Township Board to order. This is March 27th. Please stand for the invocation and pledge. Dear God, we thank you for this opportunity to serve our fellow citizens here at Northfield Township in our position. We ask your blessing upon this meeting. Give us wisdom and help us to serve our citizens well. Amen.
(inaudible) United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Please call the role clerk Manley.
Chick.
Here.
Autumn.
Here.
Manley, here.
Chalkley.
Here.
Selena.
President.
Dockett.
Here.
Bellinger.
Here.
Paul, here.
Okay, thank you. I'd like to make a motion to adopt the balance of the agenda as presented.
All support.
Motion by Chalkley, support by Chick. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Okay, that passes. We now have an opportunity for call to the public. If anyone would like to speak to us tonight, please come on up to the microphone. Turn it on, keep it up by your mouth so we can hear and the television people can hear. And state your name, your address, and you have about three minutes to share.
Mary Devlin, 9211 Brookside Drive. The first thing I want to say is that there are a lot of positive projects that are in the offing for this township, and I hope everyone will get on board to help make it happen, okay? The next thing I have to talk about or to ask is, I don't know, what is, if Paul can mention this, or anybody on the board or not, what is Lieutenant Green getting at this time in regards to benefits or unemployment, or is he still getting paid or not getting paid? And so if you can legally, you know, tell me that, I would appreciate it. And I understand that you are innocent until proven guilty, but I also think that the taxpayers might not be too happy about money being paid. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Devlin. Do you have anyone else who would like to come up tonight to speak to us?
Hello, Dave Gordon, 5558 Helena Road. I'm here to talk about the county road commission and the project they've done along our Northfield, North Territorial Road. Anybody who's traveled in the last month has seen a lot of gigantic trees being cut down. The plan, they got money from the feds to cut down trees within 10 feet of the right of way. There were a number of people at the Washtenaw County Road Commission meeting last week that I attended, all of them were outraged that this was happening. It's, I consider it to be a waste of $200,000 in taxpayers' funds. I was told by the county, I've talked to the people, Roy Townsend there, who's the managing director, I've talked to people at the state DOT who signed off on the paperwork for the next project, which at this point has been sent back, but another $600,000 or $700,000. It was scheduled to take down more trees all the way from Spencer to Huron River Drive on North Territorial. At least that's been postponed at this point. I was told that they couldn't get the federal funds for the culverts repair without putting in the destruction of the trees because it was a safety project. It was money from the federal government for improving the safety on the roads. However, after speaking with the state DOT people told me that there are other alternatives such as rumble strips along the sides of the roads, a new thing called a safety edge or an angled wedge that they do at the edge of the road which stop people from going off the road, which would not have required removing these trees. I got a letter from Roy Townsend who basically said, quote, "We don't have a prepared list of the people who supported or opposed this project." Quote, "We did not classify or identify any of the trees as landmark or heritage as part of this project." But when you look at the engineer opinion, engineering documentation that he sent to me, there were 15 trees that are larger than 37 inches in diameter. And I know of one that was at least 60 inches in diameter. We spent $27,000 to remove those. There were 30 trees from 19 inches to 36 inches in diameter, and we spent $34,500 to remove There was one person that was killed on this road in the last five years during the study. But there were 10 million people that traveled the road during that period of time. I think that, I know that you don't have any control over what the county road commission does, but I certainly would hope that the board uses whatever political pressure you can bring to make sure that the county doesn't act in this irresponsible way in the future because these trees were here long before the road was there. They were probably here, many of them, long before any Europeans settled this part of the country. And taking them out is like having, placing no value at all on the tree. And hopefully, we're more enlightened than that in this century to realize the value of these trees. One last thing, when you look at November, when the trees start turning in the fall, you always see every year an article in the paper about going up to Route 22 because it's so gorgeous and it's a winding road that has a bunch of trees on the side of it. That's what makes it beautiful. This was denuding our community and reducing the value of our township, and we wound up paying for it. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else like to speak at this time? Seeing no one, we will move on. I would like us to defer any board member response until at the end of the meeting since we, our attorney needs to take, to leave at eight o'clock, and we may need his advice for some of our agenda items. So if there's no objection to that, I'd like that to be moved to the end. Seeing no objection.
(cough) What moved to the end?
Board member response to any statements that we just had from the public. Okay.
I mean, actually, I do object because the public may not be able to spend the whole time with our meeting, so I think it's important to have the board members' responses at the beginning.
Does anyone have a response?
I agree.
I agree.
Does anyone have a response to any of the?
I have one.
Go ahead, Ms. Selena.
First of all, we have asked our attorney to create a statement for us in regards to Lieutenant Green. We have heard the public, we need to address that. The next is, I am also flabbergasted by the road commission, the fact, and we've had this, that they didn't include the township, didn't let us know, didn't have public hearings. It was quite interesting because I drive down that road and it's sad. And I see electrical poles closer to the road than some of these trees, so how does that happen? And my husband and I actually were talking about it, and there was an article up north that someone hit an electrical pole and died. So I think, and I've talked to my other people, other alternatives could have been investigated other than taking down trees that make the road beautiful. And I just think it's sad that the public wasn't informed, we weren't informed, and when I drive by it, it's like, wow. When you put in the road, you didn't take down those trees. Why now? I think it had to do with the grant money, unfortunately. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Autumn.
I also agree with what David Gordon said as far as the rhyme of the reason. I travel on the east side of North Territorial on a weekly basis, and as I was driving on Sunday, I noticed there are dead trees that were left alive, I mean, left standing while there was a perfectly good living tree that was in the same perimeter chopped down. And it didn't happen just once or twice, it was time after time after time that you went down the road and you seen this. What also appalls me is that we have all these trees now cut down and they're left there. What is the sense of trying to prevent safety when you have all these cut trees and trunks of trees in the roadway now? So they're not cleaning it up. I mean, this has gone down all the way, well, this has gone all the way down to Gugofferson Road on North Territorial, and I've seen it from there to Naller. So they have not cleaned them up.
Not yet. They're going to grind out the stumps, and the wood is left there for the landowners who wanted to keep the wood, otherwise they took care of it. So I understand. Ms. Chick.
So the wood is left there for the landowners, so is it the landowner's responsibility to remove that wood? Then that's probably going to lay there for a long time. But my concern is that I think it should have been, number one, planned much better than this. Everybody should have been informed. I do want to belabor this because I know the attorney has to leave. Everybody said basically what I would like to say, but options should have been brought up. I never heard about the rumble strip thing, and I think that would have been a much better option if it's for people driving off the road. Take out the dead trees, leave the live trees alone. There's, it's just no rhyme or reason to how they chose the trees, so. Maybe the board as a whole, if they wanted to, could do a document or a proposal, not a proposal, but at least advise the county how they feel about it. I'd like to see it stopped until they get a better plan going.
Thank you. Ms. Bellinger.
I have to agree with Trustee Chick. Well, actually, everybody here that spoke. It was terrible waste of the tax money and abuse of the tax money, just as Mr. Gordon mentioned. And I find it a little curious how there was almost zero notification. A little sneaky on the county's part, in my opinion. Perhaps, as Trustee Chick mentioned, perhaps some small memo or some letter should be drafted in some order to the Washtenaw County Commissioners. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, Mr. Dockett, last comment.
MTA, Michigan Township Insight Memo. I don't know if we all seen it. Week of the 3/16/18, page, bottom of page six. "The Department of Labor is no longer advising that most workers are employees. Withdrawn its 2014 guidance." It's too bad that we spent all this money with two attorneys. Our regular attorney wrote on it. Our labor attorney wrote on it. So we paid that lawyer, we paid the other lawyer to write up these contracts that now the MTA says they're not employees. I haven't heard anything about what happened to all this stuff that we paid for. I don't know if we're going to continue, I'd like to know if we're going to continue harassing these people to become contractors or whatever. I think people should read that. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Dockett. Okay, the next item on our agenda, correspondence and announcements. I don't have anything at this point, does anyone? Ms. Bellinger.
I'll just have a Parks and Rec meeting April 19th. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. All right, the next thing we have is our sewer service rate study results, and we have Vic Cooper-Wasser and Brian Rubel here tonight to present the results of the rate study. Good evening.
Good evening. Thank you for having us. It was in the fall that I think you asked us to get started with the rate study. We did that, we gathered some data, appreciate the help of Ms. Greenes and his staff in getting that to us. And just to introduce my colleague who will do most of the talking tonight, Mr. Cooper-Wasser, longtime employee of Tetra Tech, has actually made rates, municipal rates, an expertise of his. Over 40 years, he has studied and implemented that and has worked in over 100 municipalities in Michigan, Ohio, Midwest to develop rate structures. So I think this is at least the third time he has helped with Northfield's rates, and so he's very knowledgeable in this. He sits on a national committee for the American Water Works Association to develop standards for rate studies. So you are in very good hands tonight with Mr. Cooper-Wasser's work. And with that, I'm going to let him talk about that, and I'm going to turn the slides and be here for backup, so.
Thank you.
Thanks, Brian.
Well, good evening, everyone.
You need to have that right up to your mouth. Okay.
Can you hear me now? Is that better?
Speak louder.
So this is an update to our last cost of service study on the wastewater rates. And I want to move on to the agenda. So there's a list of the agenda items, starting off with the bolt opinion, what is a cost of service rate study, the customer types that you have, assumptions that we've made, and we've calculated baseline rates. And we've calculated baseline rates plus what the impact would be if a $3 million storage tank were to be built. We've also calculated what the rate would be if that tank were built and a $3 million trunk sewer were built. There's also a discussion on system development charges. The system development charge is your connection fee, and then potential decisions to be made and questions. So let's go to the next slide. The bolt opinion. When it comes to rates here in Michigan, well, there is a legal precedent that we try to follow in terms of the guidance of the bolt versus Lansing opinion, that there's a three-part test to determine a valid user fee. It should be regulatory, it should be proportional to the necessary cost of the service, and it should be voluntary. Users must be able to refuse or limit the use of the service. Now, most rates in communities and system development charges already comply with tests one and three. However, what a rate study does is it memorializes the proportionality, item two of this requirement, that you can't just set a rate arbitrarily. And what a cost of service rate study does is it documents compliance with the second requirement. So what is a cost of service rate study? In this case, we cover a five-year period, that is the study period, FY 1819 to 2023. We first determine the revenue required to cover O&M expenses, equipment replacement, capital outlays, not debt financed, and debt service. We estimate the total billable flow. We calculate rates for metered customers, calculate rates for quarterly fixed customers per REU, and we look at the rate impacts of funding the capital improvement options that we discussed. So the next slide is the customer types. There are 14 customers that are billed on a per thousand gallon used basis, 3,416 customers that have billed a flat rate charge per residential equivalent unit per quarter. Next slide. So baseline rates. The assumption on baseline rates, that growth would be five REUs per year during this period, no loss of existing customers or no loss of existing billable flow for metered customers, inflation 3% general, 10% for hospitalization, and construction of no major capital projects. So with those assumptions, we looked at calculating rates in two ways. One way is what we call the just-in-time approach, where there is a calculated rate with an annual adjustment based on the revenue required that year, and that's what you're seeing here. So currently, the rate for an REU per quarter is $84, and under this approach, it would go up to $87, a $3 increase in July, and then increase accordingly in future years. There's a slight dip in the last year under this method because we're basically just taking expenses each year and what the rate has to be for that year. So we have a dip in expenses that last year.
Mr. Cooper-Wasser, that last year, one of our bonds are being paid off, is that the reason that there's the dip in the last year?
That sounds right.
Okay, that's my understanding.
And so, on a theoretical basis, strictly looking at the numbers, these are the results. When it comes to customers that are billed on a metered basis, currently, they are billed $5.60 for every 1,000 gallons of water used. That would go up to $5.80 July 1, and then increase accordingly in the future years. The other method is a, for the flat rate customers, is to say, okay, what would the rate need to be if we wanted to have one adjustment in July and not change anything for the next five years? Theoretically, mathematically, what would it need to be to cover our expenses over five years? So we took that approach, looked at what the result would be, and the rate would be $90.20 per quarter, and that would not change for the next five years, based on the current usage and the current expenses and projections of current expenses, and also with the construction of no major capital projects. On the metered rate side, taking the same approach, it would go to $6.01 in July and stay at that level for the entire five years. So we also looked at two alternatives that involve constructing capital projects, major capital projects. The first capital project is a $3 million storage tank at the wastewater treatment plant. And let's go to the next slide. So the impact of doing that on an annual adjustment basis, the rates would be adjusted according to this table, and in July, the first increase would take the rate to $101.60 under this alternative. The next slide, the impact on a metered customer, the rate would go to $6.78 July 1. The next slide, we look at the approach where we have one adjustment and the rate stays constant for five years. In that case, the rate would go to $104.70 in July and would remain that same number for five years. And that would cover the expenses of constructing a 3 million gallon storage tank at the sewage And the next slide, the impact on a metered customer with a one-time adjustment, it would go to $6.98 in July and stay constant for five years. And then finally, we looked at the financial impact of constructing two major capital projects, a $3 million storage tank and a $3 million trunk sewer. In that case, the rate July 1 would go to $116.30 and then be adjusted each year thereafter. For the metered customer, it would go to $7.75 and adjusted each year thereafter. Using the single rate adjustment approach for a flat rate customer, it would go to $119.20 in July and not be adjusted any further for the next five years. And for a metered customer, it would go to $7.95 per 1,000 gallons. So those are the results of what the rates would be projected to be, A, if there were no major capital projects, this is what we call the baseline rates, B, if a single major project was built, that's the $3 million storage tank, and then the third calculation is if two major capital projects were to be built. And so this shows you what the impact on rates would be. The next slide discusses the system development charge or connection fee. And the purpose of that charge is to promote equity between new and existing customers, and this goes through the methodology that we used to calculate the fee. We basically calculated the replacement value of the wastewater system divided by the capacity of the system in REUs to come up with a rate, but then deducted a credit for any outstanding bond principal that is currently being paid by quarterly rates. That's the methodology. So what we had as a result of those calculations was currently, the connection fee is $5,973, and we estimate that based on the replacement value of the wastewater system today, that could be increased to a maximum of $6,255, and there would be math behind that to support that increase if you chose to do that. So some potential decisions would be, when will the township decide on rate adjustments, if any? Should the usage rates be adjusted? The method, should the usage rates be adjusted each year, or should they be a constant value, where you make one adjustment in the first year and nothing for the other four years? And then finally, should the connection fee be increased, you know, up to the maximum defendable number? And with that, I just open it up to questions.
You don't know this yet, but this township voted to get rid of 17 of the units that are going to go on a meter here. So I don't know what that did to your study, because you said if everything is constant, this is your study. But a couple weeks ago, they decided, I didn't, but they voted to go on a meter. So I don't know how that's going to affect their deal, and I think it would be knocking the weight off. But, and also, the $3 million tank, we all know on this board that I'll be end up, you know, probably $6 million before we're done. So I don't go along with that. Thank you.
Thank you. Do you have any questions?
Can you explain if this is going to throw your study off, 17, you're losing 17?
Our study is based on the data we had at the time.
Excuse me?
Our study is based on the data that we were provided a few months ago. If the data you're talking about is very, very recent, it sounds like it wouldn't change the results. Appreciate it.
I'm not hearing you very good. Okay.
Okay. Ms. Chick.
Under assumptions, under inflation, you've got 3% general, 10% hospitalization. Can you explain what hospitalization would be?
Okay, let me look at the detailed tables. We looked at the...
Could you please tell me what page that is?
They're not numbered, but it's under assumptions.
They're on the bottom, on the middle, but they're really hard to read.
Eight, it's hard to read.
Thank you.
Seven, sorry. Seven, sorry.
You were provided with the backup tables, I believe, no?
No.
The Excel spreadsheets. Well, going through the Excel spreadsheets that were done for the study, items that may have been impacted by this 10% increase in your budget, there is a line item called Beyond that specific line item, I can't say which others may have been impacted, but there was one line that we used 10% per year rather than 3%, only because the rate of inflation, those costs was higher than the CPI that we can see.
Thank you. Well, see, we have staff who work at the wastewater treatment plant, and they roll all of these costs into what it's going to cost to operate the wastewater treatment. So the assumption was that there was going to be a 10% increase in the cost of hospitalization over the years.
That's what I thought.
For their health care.
Employees.
Okay.
For the employees.
Okay. That's what I was expecting.
Right, and that's why it shows up like that. Now, I know Mr. Ains forwarded out all of these spreadsheets that are very substantial and very complicated to the entire board, and, you know, you're welcome to print all fifteen pages of every four, of all four of those out, but the calculations can be adapted. So say we get more than five REUs, you know, there's a lot of changes that can be made that could help us into the future, setting the fees. So this is assuming we get no growth at all, virtually, five REUs, which is almost nothing. But say we get Green Oak wanting to come in with several hundred units, we would have those connection fees then that would be captured, which is not reflected in this whole study. But all of those spreadsheets that we got could be, all those numbers could be plugged in, and then we would know the impact. So I just thought I'd butt in, I'm sorry.
Very true, very true.
More questions?
So this is just based on nothing happening as of today?
Okay.
Well, we know we're losing seventeen.
Ms. Bellinger.
So page number eight, this is what is recommended for just keeping afloat or something? Is that the main idea, or just keeping the prices in current with inflation? Is that what, to go up from eighty-four to eighty-seven, and eighty-eight, eighty, and all that? Is that what this is saying here?
To go from the eighty-four dollars currently, I think, to eighty-seven, if you do the every-year approach. And I think if you do the single increase approach, it was...
Ninety, twenty.
Ninety-something, ninety dollars and twenty cents. So to stay at pace with the 3% inflation assumption, the 10% hospitalization, no capital improvements, using the currently projected debt service payments, if you took the approach where we're just going to look at expenses each year and recalculate the number each year, then for the first year, it would go up three dollars from eighty-four to eighty-seven. Basically, long story short, to keep up with inflation. There's also been a little bit of loss of what we call billable flow over the past few years that the eighty-four-dollar rate was based on. So that also accounts for some of the increase.
Does this particular thing allow for any kind of savings or whatnot at the wastewater plant for any kinds of accumulation for a rainy day, you know, a crisis or an issue?
It does not call for a, it does not include a line item to set aside funds for an infrastructure reserve fund or for that in terms of saving up for a rainy day. It does not do that. It basically keeps things as they are, pretty much just keeping up with inflation.
Thank you. Go ahead, Ms. Alnack.
So I have a follow-up on that. So for our current customers, does this rate include repair and maintenance? So let's say we have to replace a trunk line, we have to, does this rate include that, or...
This rate includes the assumptions used in setting the expenses. So I think we have in the budget something like $200,000 a year towards capital projects, capital outlays that need to be paid in cash. There isn't a specific line item that says, you know, repair costs for this particular sewer three years from now. It's not like that. It can be plugged in.
Right.
But...
So do we think this is adequate to maintain our current system in a good or operating shape going forward? So, okay, so that this will maintain what we have in case something happens, replacing items on a scheduled maintenance?
Correct.
But if we had a catastrophe, this would not cover this? But it would keep our current customers sufficient?
Dan, I think this would be true, that the $200,000 represents an adequate amount for what we can foresee today for the next few years. Recall that we're doing the asset management plan, which will be much more detailed. We're going to look manhole by manhole. And I expect when we get that done in a year, year and a half, we actually will find, you know, once you start looking for things, you find them. So I think when we come back at the end of the asset management plan, we may find that the $200,000 is a little low. But we really don't know that until we get done with that plan.
So would it be the recommendation that we should stay status quo until we see that asset management plan, so we know, you know, if we have to put away more or charge more to maintain our current customers and our current system?
I think $200,000 is the minimum you want to put away for that right now. I think it will rise in the future when we know more. I think it is on the low end.
The $200,000?
I do believe that.
Okay. Should, so do we want to change our models to be a little more realistic?
I can't tell you what the more realistic number is today. I will be back in a year, year and a half with that number.
Okay, all right. Can I continue? I have a couple more questions.
Please.
So then if we move, okay, so, let's see here, so with the, so moving to, I think, when we go to the basin, we're saying we are going to include those costs for our current customers to pay for future use customers. Because our current customers would not need that, but if we want to build it, then we're charging the current users, we're putting money away for future usage.
I can't speak to the engineering details of that, but as I understand it, that tank is also needed for current customers in order to help safeguard the operation of the plant. So it isn't necessarily an accurate statement to say that that tank is solely for future customers. Current customers during big rainfalls would benefit from having that tank there.
And how many times a year do we have those big rainfalls? And have we asked our current customers if they want to pay this increase to potentially fund it? I mean, how often do we have major rainfalls?
We had one here in March, early February, March, put us in violation of the DNR reports. We could go two or three years without one, and then we could get three or four in a row in a spring. You don't, you really can't predict those. We've been lucky we haven't been struck with like a four- or five-inch rain that other people had. That would really make a mess for us.
Wasn't the last one a problem with a manhole somewhere, though?
Yeah, we had a manhole overflow, but we were still pretty close to capacity before that happened.
Okay, so, and then, okay, I mean, we might want to look at other alternatives to fund the basin? Maybe special assessment districts for those areas that might be using it more than the current ones? So anyway, those are my questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Otto.
So my understanding, would it be safe to say whenever Horseshoe Lake floods, that's when we usually have it, almost every year during that time period?
Yeah.
So after the thaw and spring, we usually have a lot of rainfall.
Yeah, but when our system goes up and we have a heavy flow, it's system-wide. Horseshoe Lake, when it floods, is a worse customer, but in every part of our system, the flow goes up.
Okay. Ms. Chik.
My understanding, correct me if I'm wrong, is it isn't just a heavy rainfall, that there have been several instances during the years where the plant cannot handle the flow, and you have to bypass some systems?
Yeah, that's pretty regular, that we bypass part of the process.
Mr. Docket.
Could you tell me when, it seems like this comes out real fast, Ross, you know? We had a five-year study. Seems to me like it was only like three years ago. When is the end of our last five-year study? And when would this have to take place? If we're doing five-year studies, I hate to have to raise everybody's rates every three years. I mean, you know, it just doesn't make sense to me. So do you know when our last study was put in place?
The last, it's interesting.
I can't hear you.
The last study was April of 2014, so it was four years ago. And we looked at that question very hard about how this, the current analysis compared to the analysis that was done four years ago. What we found were the expenses project extremely closely. What we're projecting as expenses now, almost, we're within a few percent of what we projected four years ago. What we found is the billable flow has gone down. The township is collecting, has fewer flow to bill against. We think that's largely due to the correctional facilities, demand going down. So if you're selling less wastewater, then the cost of everybody else has to go up a little bit.
Well, you didn't ask my question, though. When would this take place? At the end of the five-year study? Or you want to bring it down right away?
What, a change of rates?
This thing you're talking about. When does it start? I want to know if it starts at the end of our last year, our last five-year study?
We are, everything...
Will it be before the, another year, excuse me, are we going to wait for another year? That's the five-year study.
Everything we are projecting starts with...
I can't hear you.
Everything we are projecting tonight starts with a July 2018 budget.
Well, that's only a four years.
Then you can not raise the rates and not bring in enough money. That's your choice.
Well, then, but it's not a five-year study, then, if we're doing it in four years.
Okay. And our study very clearly indicates in 2014 to review this data on an annual basis because things change.
Right, right.
Very clear.
Okay, well, my concern is that, you know, part of this is that we haven't, you know, we could have a catastrophic failure like happened at McComb County. You know, I don't know what the system's like out there. I know you're televising and, you know, doing repairs, the maintenance is ongoing. I'm thankful we have such a good team there at the wastewater treatment plant. But we haven't, this township hasn't really taken good care of it, I don't believe, over the years, making sure that the money has been set aside for maintenance. And you all know when we get these pumps in, how expensive that is. We've had some of those lately. So I know the money is necessary for operations and maintenance, so I just want to make sure that we're not going to be behind the eight ball and with this whole thing. I also know that we got this wastewater treatment plant for a song, right, from the state, virtually? And so I don't believe our rates have been appropriate for many, many years to build up the kind of fund balance to take care of some of these things, should we have a catastrophic failure. So anyway, I am glad that we have these tables now that can be adapted. We can put in however many REUs we anticipate, however many connections we anticipate, and be able to go ahead and adjust our fees appropriately so that we're not going to be stuck with a big expense all of a sudden not anticipated. So I appreciate the work you've put into this, and we'll have time to think about this as a board. I didn't anticipate us making a decision tonight about this. And you can all study the spreadsheets that have been provided, and I know Mr. Ains sent them out to all of you. But, you know, think about this carefully, you know, you can put some more questions together, and I'm sure Mr. Rube will be available, Mr. Cooper-Wasser will be available, and Mr. Ains, Mr. Willis, you know, so we can get more information as the few weeks go by, and then make a decision on what we want to do. Ms. Bellinger. Go ahead.
I have something. My, I brought in a bill a couple of weeks ago, and I showed it to the treasurer. My first sewer bill was eighty-three dollars. We might have got it for a song, but my first bill was eighty-three dollars, or it was three dollars and eighty cents. Now it is eighty-four dollars.
Okay. Was that 50 years ago, Mr. Docket?
Yeah, just about that. I was on the first one, the first, the first run was from the sewer plant to the Whitmore Lake School on Main Street. And there was no hookup fee. You only paid for the frontage footing, that's it.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Manley.
Just, I guess, a comment, when we are thinking about this, because I don't think we should decide right now. I mean, we could have a one-time adjustment every year of $35. That's $420 a year. I mean, just think of people's budgets also when we're thinking of this, because to me, that's pretty substantial, so.
Oh, that's what the two, two of them, yeah. $35, if you think, if you break it down to monthly, you know...
Thirty-five dollars.
A month?
From eighty-four to 119.
Yeah, eighty-four to 119, but that's quarterly, so...
Quarterly, oh, yeah, that's true. So $140, but...
Yeah, yeah, it's substantial. So, you know, there's, there's not necessarily the thought of a three-million-dollar project and a three-million-dollar project. There's, there could be some combination of three million, one million. We have two trunk lines. One, we need a $2 million, and the other one, we need a $1 million if we were to do anything. So it wouldn't necessarily be three million, so that's all adjustable. And you wouldn't want to do anything if you didn't have any users probably coming online. So we need to think about all the ramifications of what's going on here. And we don't need to make a decision tonight, but we should be thinking about this in the next few months. Ms. Bellinger.
It may be good to also consider, is there a way to, if we're talking about new users coming out, you know, more people in the area, new people hooking up, more users, whatnot, it would be good to not have the old people that are currently online to have to fork out a lot of money for the new users. I don't know how that could be addressed, but perhaps, you know, you've had a lot of experience with different aspects, helping communities contend with this, as opposed to, in a sense, punishing the current users for the possibility of, or even, you know, new people moving in and so forth to the area and using the facilities.
It's a classic chicken and the egg issue of, do you build the capacity and then new users come in, or the timing of that? So, you know, I can't, can't say exactly to predict an answer on that in terms of the timing. Because the concept here, and we always try to do this, is that growth will pay for growth. And this baseline study is, keeps things as they are, it does not account for existing users to pay for growth that isn't due to them. So this study follows the concept of growth paying for growth. And it's a, it's a fine line in terms of when to make an improvement... And, and it's a, it's a, it's a fine line in terms of when to make a, an improvement, you know? Looking ahead in the crystal ball, what's going to happen in the next five years? Who's going to connect? What do we need to build to plan for that? So it is a fine line to kind of, basically what you're asking is to predict the future. And, and we all are in that situation of, uh, how can we accurately predict what's going to happen growth-wise, two years from now, three years from now?
Ms. Otto.
Um, on slide twenty-three, you talk about the, um, the, uh, tap fees. Uh, it said it could be higher if the township commits to a capital project. Now, you're just, the sixty-two, fifty-five is just recommending what we have today. Is there a percentage? So is, if we're going to do the basin, what would be the pa, cap fee, I mean, the tap fee for that? If we were going to do the, the two projects, what would be the tap fee for that?
It would have to be looked at individually, and the reason is, uh, how the capital project is paid for. If the new capital project is paid for with a bond, with debt service, you have to deduct the principal payment each year of that debt service from the connection fee. Because when somebody comes into the system new, they've paid their connection fee, but then to bill them in the quarterly rates for the principal of the new debt would be what we call double dipping. So to answer your question, if the, uh, improvement is paid by debt service, we normally do not see a big increase in the connection fee.
Okay.
If the improvement is paid for in cash, three million dollars in cash, then there is no debt service on that project that the new user would be paying in their rates because it would have been paid for in cash. And in that case, the connection fee would, would go up more. And it'd have to be calculated on an individual basis that, each, each time you make an improvement to the system.
You've done that, I think. And, and it's, it's.
Use the microphone, Mr. Ruble.
He has done that, and, and it's in the detailed tables that were distributed.
Oh, okay.
Roughly, the single, uh, three-million-dollar project would increase, you could go up to sixty-two ninety. So we're, we're talking less than a hundred-dollar difference there. And with the two, three-million-dollar projects, you could go to sixty-three twenty-five.
Okay.
So it's a nominal increase, and that's because the assumption is that the projects are paid for with a bond and not in cash. That's why the increase is minimal.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, can we move on to our agenda?
Except I'd like to say there's only three people on this whole board here that's, that's on the sewer. It seems like all the ones that aren't on the sewer are real excited about raising the rates. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, well, you're on, yeah, some of them.
I'm on the sewer.
Yeah?
Don't steal with me.
No, I'm on the sewer.
Yep.
Who's on the sewer?
Both of us are.
I said, I said, three of us.
Okay.
No, we're on the sewer.
Okay.
I said, only three of us.
Thank you, Mr. Ruble and Mr. Cooperwasser.
On this board are, are, um, paying the bill. We're not quite as excited as some of the other people, maybe.
Okay. Moving on to our next item, uh, on the agenda is, this is, um, the review of the master plan proposal. Mr. Ains, you had put together a memo for this that you'd like to, um, discuss briefly before we make a motion.
Yes, the memo I put out, I was using the calculation of the high figure, which was originally the master plan plus the zoning amendments. You had already approved doing the zoning amendments, so my figures were off. The, uh, the number of this cost for the master plan alone is twenty-four thousand five hundred for the total.
Right.
And if you divide that into force, we'd be looking at doing one-fourth in this fiscal year, which would be six thousand one twenty-five, and three-fourths in the next fiscal year, which would be eighteen thousand four seventy-five. So it's less than what my memo was showing.
Okay, thank you. Well, um.
Your memo shows thirty-nine thousand total. Is that correct? Is that figure direct, correct?
No, that's what I was just saying, Mr. Dockett. When that figure was used, that was when we originally were talking about the master plan plus the zoning amendments that would be part of that. And the board had already approved those zoning amendment changes.
It still leaves a total of thirty-seven thousand, though, right?
Twenty-five, twenty-four fifty, twenty-four five, sorry.
No, but what the other one is already approved is thirty-nine.
Right, it would still be the thirty-nine, but you've already approved a part of that, so.
But I like to use the actual figure. I don't like the going around the bush deal. Thirty-nine thousand is what it is.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Dockett, all right. Well, um, to get this, so we can start to discuss it, I would like to make a motion to authorize the township manager to sign the contract with McKenna to begin a master plan update at a cost of twenty-four thousand five hundred dollars, with the cost to be split one quarter for this fiscal year and three quarters for the next fiscal year. The scope of work is detailed in the December eleventh, twenty-seventeen memo to Mr. Ains.
I'll support.
Okay, motion by Chalk, we support by Chick. And now I would like to say a couple of things about this. Um, this board had approved at our last meeting to take a look at, um, to have the planning commission take a look at the zoning in, uh, the Whitmore Lake North Territorial area. And, um, that would be most appropriately done in the context of the master plan so that we can actually get public input on that. So, um, that's part of the reason why this is brought back to us today to, um, to reconsider this. But the board had also made a motion, um, to actually talk about it again. So here it is, again, before us. And the master plan is, um, the original was in twenty-twelve, and then there was an amendment in twenty-fourteen. So we are approaching, uh, time when we want to get started on this to actually have a valid master plan. So that's why it's, uh, being brought back to us today. So, Ms. Otto, go ahead.
I just had one question. I just had one question in regards to the document. On the back, it talked about, uh, ZBA cases, review and address ZBA decisions, and it had a fee of twelve hundred dollars. Now, I know McKenna is overseeing, is assisting us. I'm on the ZBA board, and I know McKenna is assisting us. Um, Vatty is assisting us with the ZBA decisions and providing the, the report to the board. So what I was wondering is, what are you going to review and how far, how far back are you going to review it to make that decision? Because I thought we've been doing this for almost a year, year and a half, almost two years, having Vatty do this. Um, the decisions that the board made was basically on their recommendations.
Okay. Um, that, this whole, that whole zoning ordinance fee summary, that's all being taken care of, that we've already approved that portion, but Mr. Lippens may be able to address your question. If you, you want to come up to the microphone, Mr. Lippens?
I guess I didn't see it previously when we approved it, so I thought.
It was a few back, right. So this is, yes, this.
Oh, okay.
Well, this is a December eleventh, um, so we've already approved a portion of this. We didn't approve the master plan, but we did approve the zoning ordinance amendments in December, yes.
Yeah, up at the time.
Right, so now we're just talking about the other part of it, which is the master plan.
Yeah, I was just curious to know, what actually are you reviewing since you're providing the reports?
Well, we would look at the minutes, um, and this is part of the zoning scope, so as background to the zoning work. Um, I think the last major update to the zoning ordinance was done in two thousand four, so we would look back at minutes, um, you know, for.
Going that far back, okay.
And really, it's just a review what the variance is are, so we can make sure that the zoning amendments are addressing that. Sorry. Is that a good answer?
Yeah, that's all I wanted to know.
Okay.
I just thought it was a little odd to see that.
Yeah, there's two scopes in this memo, one that we're already, one that we're already working on, and then the master plan scope, which we delayed, um, at the last time we discussed it.
Okay. Um, Ms. Manley, you had a question?
Um, yeah, where it says, in order to facilitate development in the corridor along US twenty-three in certain areas, is that the same area that the PC is, the planning commission's looking at?
That's, that was our, that was our motion, um, to have them take a look at the development in the corridor along US twenty-three, south of North Territorial.
So that's the same area?
That's my understanding. Whitmore Lake Road.
I thought it was Whitmore Lake Road. It used to be US twenty-three.
It did, okay. Uh, Ms. Chick.
Yeah, I just wanted to reiterate that it's important, uh, with what we're looking at down here in the downtown area and down at North Territorial, that we work in conjunction with the master plan. I mean, if we don't do this now, um, we're going to have to start doing revisions later, or it, it just doesn't gel right. It has to be, uh, working together. And there was something I read today, actually, um, that, um, you hadn't thought of before, but, um, it, it's a, a planning issue. Um, I want to read something real quickly, I apologize for saying. This was from the planner, the last issue of the, um, planner, Michigan Planner. So at a minimum, planners are charged with protecting the public health, safety, and welfare of the community. However, planners and community officials also have the ability to illuminate and articulate the connection between local land use and development decisions and their impacts on community health. Planners can assist communities in identifying their vision for a healthy community and in developing plan to get there. According to the National Research Council, the places where people live, work, and play influence many of the nation's most pressing public detriments, such as levels of income and education, determinants, I'm sorry, uh, such as levels of income and education and exposure to violence, as well as health outcomes, including respiratory illness, cardiovascular disease, injury, and mental health. For example, access to housing and employment affects social well-being. Sewer and water systems protect us from disease. Well-designed transportation options keep us safe. Parks and green space support our mental health, and access to fresh fruits and vegetables support our physical health. So all of this is important, uh, when we're doing the master plan, and, um, I think it's a, it's more than just looking at land and businesses and homes, and it, it encompasses the whole environment of the community, so it's an important issue.
Very well said, thank you. Ms. Bellinger.
On page five, I see a list of the different fees. The five and six has fees for, um, well, page six, we already approved that. Um, so it looks as though we could, uh, trim the fees a little if we were to remove items number two and three and reduce this professional fee down to twenty thousand dollars instead of twenty-four thousand five hundred dollars. That would still give us a solid master plan. Um, that should satisfy the DDA and, um, the planning, planning commission. I'd like to entertain that possibility.
I'd hate to see the master plan, I mean, the non-motorized plan removed, although I would like some clarification on that, Mr. Lippens. I know SEMCOG produces a non-motorized plan and the county has one. Is this, um, the portion in this master plan fee, is this just the coordination of our parks and rec plan for non-motorized transportation and our, um, our plans here at the township with, um, SEMCOG and the county?
Yeah, so the state actually does require that complete streets are considered in the master plan process?
We did pass an ordinance, by the way.
Right, so the, the master plan should address that with a chapter. So this is essentially writing a new chapter on non-motorized transportation planning, and it is coordination with the county plan, which has been adopted since the last time you looked at the plan. And I would say that, um, when we initially looked at this, and there was a time, I think a year ago, that the board actually removed the open space preservation plan, um, and we had initially priced the non-motorized plan at forty-five hundred, so in this proposal, I actually reduced that, thinking that, um, it wasn't as big a priority. And I know that the open space preservation is a priority. I would hate to do this without doing it. So in order to keep the fees at the, the same rate, I looked at reducing the scope of the non-motorized plan so that we can include an open space preservation plan at, at the same fee that we were looking at.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Elnuck.
Um, so one thing is, um, Mr. Lippens, if you can still say there, I just want to make sure, um, you as our planners will have the capacity, because I know we're working on the RFP request for, proposal for the North Village. We are updating the zoning, and now we're going to put this master plan on, like, on your plate, so I just want to make sure you have the adequate staff to handle it within timing and within cost.
Absolutely, and I actually think that since we are working on the zoning, it makes the timing of this that, that much more crucial, and it will have a benefit to the township that we look at both of these things at the same time.
And is this your bottom line, meaning we wouldn't expect any additional cost, or is there any sort of ten percent, within ten percent on that?
Um, this is the cost being approved. We did include, um, a lump sum rate for additional public workshops, so we included one public workshop, which we would schedule, um, as, as soon as authorized, we work to find the right time for that. If the township wanted to do additional public workshops, uh, there's a, a lump sum price in there, but that would have to be authorized.
Yeah, and so, I mean.
So yes, this is the total, total price. You could choose to do more public outreach if you elected.
Right, okay, so it's a thousand dollars per outreach.
If, if we wanted to do workshops.
Okay, all right, thank you. And then the other, I, I might not, so I know we've talked about this in contents of potentially the Whitmore Lake North Territorial area to update that. Um, what kind of businesses, I mean, have we been getting in that maybe don't fit there right now? Is there any elaboration on that that we can share?
Mr. Ains, you're, you're aware of the projects that have been coming in and the, um, the issues. I'll let you speak to that, and then I'll give my two cents.
Well, the proposals for the North Village, uh, those are not requested to be in it.
No, no, not, not North Village, this is the North Territorial Whitmore Lake area. What proposals maybe, we, we have received that right now don't fit, so that we've had to turn them away? Can you elaborate on that?
You have a number of parties that approached us about selling property that they own in these areas, and with the prospects for buying those, they tend to want more of industrial nature of property. And, uh, Mr. Dockett and I talked today about that further, that, uh, you know, there are a great deal of potential there, we think, for industrial development, whereas there may be some other limitations for other types of development. But that wouldn't be decided, I think, until you get to the planning commission and the public hearings and the input you get from the property owners and that type of thing. Uh, we also had a proposal a while back for, uh, a private school to be put in that area, but it didn't fit into the zoning areas that were involved. And, uh, so we had to, uh, tell them they could not develop a present building, redevelop it into a site, and they didn't have time or the, uh, desire to, to go out and start a new building and the time it would take to do that and so forth. But, uh, I think obviously North Territorial is a prime area for future development in the townships.
Okay. I'm, you know, I know we've had, um, some inquiries coming in, and we're working really hard to find locations for, um, businesses that have come in. And, um, I know, uh, Vidia's been very successful in highlighting some of the locations and actually getting, um, some of the businesses to site in some areas where, um, buildings have been for sale. One thing I have noticed, though, is that we are light, and we don't have, um, a lot of opportunity for limited industrial to, uh, site. And limited industrial is, is much cleaner, cleaner and quieter than maybe everybody thought it used to be. General industrial's a little more industrial. But limited industrial, research, technology, manufacturing, um, we are pretty low on the amount of, um, area that, uh, we could have those kind of businesses. And those are really high-value, high-tax, um, businesses that could, could assist, um, with leveling out the, the burden on our, um, residents. So I think it's appropriate that the town, that the planning commission take a look at that and see if there are areas that are appropriate. And, and of course, getting the public input would be extremely important, and that all happens in the master plan process. be extremely important, and that all happens in the master plan process. So, I can't stress enough how important this is at this time, to go ahead and do this and get it done for the future of our township. Ms. Zelenak, go ahead.
I have one more. So, I just want to let people know that there are some houses in that area, and I have been talking to Tom Monchek, our assessor, and he, when it goes to the Planning Commission, I'd like this to come out or have a definitive. At this point in time, he does not think the tax rate would impact those current people, that, you know, they wouldn't assess it at a higher rate. Obviously, when the property was sold, that's when it would take in, 'cause he had, Mr. Monchek had indicated that, you know, now that you, if it was zoned as light industrial, the housing actually is not valued as much, because it's no longer the purpose of that. So, the current residents would not be impacted by an increase in taxes. That was his understanding, so I would like to make sure that when it's addressed, that that comes out and it's definitive on that. So, initially, I will just say that I was one that voted no on this, considering the interest, I think, and my strong belief in the master plan, that I think it warrants to us to take a relook at it. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Manley.
I was one that voted no last time also, and I guess my big thing would be with McKenna is just, I know, monthly updates, some more transparency, like what are you guys doing, like a step-by-step process? I've never been through the master plan process before, so I'd like to know as we go along, what's being done at that point. That was just my request.
Oh, okay.
So, the state actually makes the Planning Commission the lead entity in creating the master plan, so we'll be working with Planning Commission and updating on the whole process the whole time. So, anyone can attend Planning Commission, ask questions during public comment, and it will be, you know, a public process. In terms of the scope, obviously, we are going to do a big public workshop, the draft documents will be posted for review, and part of what we're doing, too, is incorporating the work that we did on the North Village plan and the downtown plan into the master plan. So, we really are realizing, you know, pretty much a two-year public engagement process in all the planning efforts that Planning Commission and the DDA and the board have been undertaking during that time.
Okay, great. Ms. Chick.
Yeah, and I give a report to the board every month, and I'm trying to do one, too, even on, like at this meeting, when we don't have, give reports. I sent something out from our last meeting, so every time we do something at the Planning Commission level, it will come before the board when I do my report.
Thanks. Okay, Mr. Dockett.
We have almost no heavy industrial. The only place that I know of in the township is Raydeck, and across the street where it's on the open way there, that used to be Carter Number. They're about the only two, I think there might be a little bit up, but where, I think we gave him some at Mr., where the building, the parking lot.
Yeah, Eight Mile up there.
We told him we'd give him anything he wanted. We gave him industrial, light industrial, housing, commercial, we gave him everything when he was going to develop that. So, I think that's the only three parts we have. But I do believe that we should, I don't know how to go about it, I know very little about zoning, but I think we should zone North Territorial, excuse me, from North Territorial to Regals. It should be all light industrial there. Just think of what them people paid to get the sewer through there and all that, the price, I don't know what they're, how they're gonna pay for their property taxes there if they don't, if they can't sell it and get something going. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Can we have a roll call vote now, please? Roll call.
Can you repeat the motion?
Oh, yes. The motion was to authorize the township manager to sign the contract with McKenna to begin a master plan update at a cost of $24,500, with the cost to be split, one quarter this fiscal year and three quarters next fiscal year. The scope of work is detailed in the December 11th, 2017 memo to Mr. Ains.
Thank you. Belliger.
No.
Zelenak.
Yes.
Otto.
Yes.
Chick.
Yes.
Dockett.
No.
Manley, yes. Chocly.
Yes. Okay, that passes, thank you. I'll look forward to that. Thank you very much. Okay, moving on to item number two. Okay, I'd like to, well, unless somebody else wants to make the motion on number two. Okay, I'd like to make a motion to approve the hiring of Frank Wright as a part-time police officer contingent on passing the physical and background check.
Support.
Okay, motion by Chocly, support by Otto. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Okay, thank you. That was nice. Okay.
This is the lady who, oh, Frank Wright?
Yeah, I don't know. Okay, the next one, well, I, anybody can make a motion.
I'll make a motion.
Go ahead.
I'll make a motion that we hire the front desk clerk for the building department, assistant position. Name is Emily Hoff Siss, at a rate of $15 per hour, 30 hours per week, based, I guess, upon background check and so forth, to begin Monday, April 9th.
Okay.
I'll support.
Okay, motion by Belliger, support by Otto. Any more discussion? All in favor, say aye. Aye. Anyone opposed? No? Okay, great, that passes, seven. Next item, the Northfield Church Road culvert replacement. And I don't know if there's any...
The Northfield Church?
Well, you're right, the Northfield Church Road, there was a culvert. Okay. I would like to make a motion to approve the agreement to repair the Catholic Church Horseshoe Lake Drain and authorize the supervisor to sign the agreement.
Support.
Motion by Chocly, support by Belliger. Any discussion on this one? Go ahead, Ms. Otto.
Could we have a clarification? Is the total cost $20,000, and then we're paying a third of that, or are we paying $20,000?
As a third.
As a third.
Yeah, they were estimating, they didn't bid it out yet, they estimated high, and they believe $20,000 is gonna be well more than it will cost, but Northfield Township will only pay a third of whatever it will cost. And the agreement says that if it comes in at higher than $20,000, we can all back off. But at this point, we would only pay a third of whatever it costs.
I thought $20,000 was rather low.
You thought it was low?
Yeah.
Well, they, they'll come back if it's gonna cost more than that.
I know, but I just...
Don't give them any hints.
I was just rather surprised, just.
Okay, and we actually have two parts of this, so I have to, we have to do the agreement, and then we have to do the resolution. So, any more questions about the agreement? Mr. Dockett.
Generally, when there is a drain district, we have a drain commission in Wasna County, and there are, and there are people in this drain district, and they pay a tax to repair things. So, the same thing happened on the last drain deal. Nobody wants to do the work it takes to get these people, it's their sewer, it's their drain, they're in that drain district. Why should the township pay for their drain district when it's already set up through the courts? That all they have to do is charge the people when they do the taxes. So, why are they not paying? And they didn't pay the last time we did.
A third of it is coming from the Water Resources Commissioner for it. See, we pay one-third, the road commission pays one-third, and the...
But it's not ours. I mean, I believe who's ever in a drain district should pay it.
Is that traditionally how it was done in the past? That people came to a drain district, and if there's an issue in their district, then all those residents are, well, then why has this been changed? That everybody has to pay for it.
They don't wanna do the work that it takes.
Timing is part of it. Do we want that road to be out? How long?
Well, it's not that they have us over barrel, but that's not fair, that's not right. You know, they say we're not gonna fix it if we don't get more money out of you? Well, if it is historically and traditionally, and there's apparently a mechanism in place that each person in a drain district is paying something to a drain district for this actual situation, then why should everybody be held accountable for that?
That's where the third of the money is, the third of the money is coming from the Water Resources Commissioner, commission to pay for.
That's not from the people.
Don't they have their own little funds?
If they go out and they, if they go out and they start maintaining their drain and taking out brush and digging it out and improving that, you know, that definitely gets charged. I have charges to mine all the time. In fact, I probably have part of mine charged.
Well, you're lucky, I, they usually don't ever do it, I can tell you that. Look at this prick out here, for Christ's sake.
Do you have anything to add with that?
He hasn't been there in 50 years.
Does Manager have anything to add on this, or what have you? This is curious.
I think all the local units of government, including the sewer and the stormwater and so forth, they're all lacking sufficient funds to do all the projects that are needed. Therefore, the drainage group and the road commission have both set policies where they will not proceed unless there's a local match. So, they do have you over a barrel.
They do the same thing on the roads, but, but we're not supposed to pay one penny for the roads. They do it 'cause we pay.
Well, I understand, and I prefer we not have to pay anything, but the alternative is that we don't see the project done.
Okay. Ms. Zelenak.
I have a question.
Sure.
So, if, so the other option is we would go to the residents that are in that drain and assess them for the cost, and the impact on that is that it would take maybe six months to do that?
Take some time.
Or longer. And then the other one is, will the drain commission at that time participate, or is it just split between the road commission and the town, and the residents?
I don't know that.
The drain commission is supposed to, that's why they set it up for a drain commission. The drain, they're the ones who are supposed to put it on the taxes, and what it does is it builds up to a certain point, just like she, like the supervisor said, and if you don't use it, you don't pay. But when they do come and do something, the fund goes down, then there's an automatic back, that's all, that's how it's supposed to work.
Okay. Ms. Chick. Thank you. Ms. Chick.
So, I thought I heard when we did the Six Mile, the Catholic Church drain over on Six Mile, that the drain commission was going around inspecting these drains in anticipation of finding something. Why, did these drains collapse all of a sudden, or have they been bad for a while, and so that we could have six months to talk to the people to pay for the drain?
The road commission has been inspecting the large drains. They haven't gone, and, I mean, the four-footer that failed was a small, I mean, they hadn't inspected the four-footers, but they have culverts failing all over the county, and some of them they know about, and they've got them on a schedule, and some of them they don't. We have, we have a couple that are out on Dix, right on the, I guess it's Dixboro, that have, they've been patching, that need to be replaced. The drain commission replaces, without charging us, drains that are three-footer smaller. There's no, there's no charge. They've replaced a couple over on Earhart Road recently, last fall, but the larger ones, they do try to get the match, and they are getting the three-way split with the drain commission.
So, then, when they see a drain that's beginning to fail, do they contact the property owners that utilize that drain and advise them that if there's going to be a problem here and they need to pay for their drain? They, you would know, yeah.
That's a good question. Maybe we should have the water resources commissioner come sometime to give us a little briefing on how they...
Is Wojack still there?
I don't think...
Dennis Wojack?
I haven't seen him there recently.
She's got, she was...
Evan Pratt is the...
The other one?
Yeah.
The other one, got a couple drunk diving deckers, and they canned her.
Okay, anyway, so it would be helpful, I think, for us to have one of those. He'd be happy to come out and talk to us at a meeting, so I'll ask him. Okay. Any more comments on this, so we can vote? Okay, let's have a roll call vote.
Chocly.
Yes.
Zelenak.
Yes.
Otto.
Yes.
Belliger.
Yes.
Manley, yes. Dockett.
No.
Chick.
Yes.
Okay, thank you, that passes. And then I have to do the other part. Motion to adopt the Resolution 18582 and authorize the supervisor to sign the resolution. That's the second part. So, that was my motion.
I'll support.
Okay, motion by Chocly, support by Chick. Roll call vote, please.
I guess I'll skip Dockett. Zelenak.
Yes.
Belliger.
Yes.
Chick.
Yes.
Manley, yes.
Otto.
Yes.
Chocly.
Yes. Thank you. That passes. Okay.
Do you need a roll call vote? We did a roll call vote. Sorry. It was just a...
Okay. The next item, and is the People's Express contract. Would anybody like to make this one, or it looks like Mr. Ains wants to say something?
Mr. Burns indicated this is a remake of a prior contract, and he recommends that it be approved.
Okay. Well, I'll make a motion to approve the People's Express contract in your packet.
I'll second.
Okay, motion by Chocly, support by Manley. We have any more discussion on this one?
Yes, some questions.
Ms. Belliger, go ahead.
Um, when, I understand that we, does anybody here happen to know off the top of their head when we paid People's Express for the $10,000 for the previous?
$10,000.
Does anybody know when?
Oh, sorry, I don't know. You mean the previous contract?
Yeah. I, I contacted Jennifer, and she seemed to think it was 2016, somebody paid $10,000 for, the township paid $10,000 for 2017. I also looked up the minutes, 'cause this seemed to come up recently again, but perhaps this was just a review of the other contract. In August of 2017, we made a, it was on our agenda. For some reason, it's a two-year contract that's listed on the agenda. Says Otto moved, Chick supported, to accept the agreement with People's Express for $10,000 to continue with the contract from January 1st of 2017 through December 31st of 2018, upon review by the township's legal counsel, subject to showing liability insurance increase in $3 million to $5 million.
That motion was most likely incorrect, 'cause it should have been December, it should have been January 1st through 2018 to December...
It should have been, even the video, 'cause I thought maybe just a typo that we missed, but it's not a typo on the, the physical minutes, it's in the video as well.
Okay, so that...
It states the same in the video?
Yes, it does, which I was surprised, I didn't expect to see that January 1st, 2017, all the way through to the end of this year, December 31st, 2018.
So, if you read the contract that's in front of us, it's December, it's January 1st, 2018 through December 31st, 2018.
Now, apparently, we have not paid for 2018, correct?
That's correct.
But we paid for 2017 at the end of 2016. And I believe it was September of 2016, we played, we paid for 2017.
Correct.
So, the timing is unusual, as far as these contracts showing up, and when do we pay? When is the actual year? That's one, that's definitely, it's definitely nothing short of confusing, let's put it that way.
And, yeah, I agree. And as I, I will, again, I will not be voting on this, 'cause I am a board member of People's Express. I can give you a little history on that. Is the contracts used to run from October 1st to September 31st, 'cause that's our fiscal year. That's why we were paid in August, and somehow, when the contract came before the board, it indicated January 1st, 2017, to December 31st... the board, it indicated January 1st, 2017, to December 31st, 2017. So that's why we were paid in August, with the expectation the contract that would be approved by the board would have been October 1st through September 31st. So somewhere, it did get changed. So now we are on a fiscal year of January to December, as far as the board goes, in the last contract, as well as this contract. So there was a change, because that's not our fiscal year, is from a People's Express perspective. So that's, I think, might be adding to the confusion, Ms. Bellinger, is that it used to go from October 1st to September 31st. And in that last payment, somehow, the contract was actually changed from the 1st to the 31st of January. And for 2017, and then we kept that for 2018, from this board perspective.
I remember that confusion.
I do believe that is adding to the confusion.
There you go, the money, yeah. I remember that confusion at the time.
So do we need to change the date of this contract? So, in essence, this contract's already in effect?
That's correct. I, I, from, we're happy to take it as it's been stated for the last two years, from a People's Express. Again, I'm speaking on behalf of them, from January to December. To keep it, let's not add more confusion into it. So we are all good with this contract, for me. Again, I'm speaking as a representative of People's Express, not a board member of the township.
Okay. So then I ask another question, because our budget period is coming up. Do we want to change the date to January 1, 2019? For next year? So it'll at least be in our budget period?
Nope. I, I would keep it as is, because it's, so right now, from a township perspective, we're crossing two budget periods, which, and then for my People's Express, we're crossing two budget periods, but we'll take, you know, the 10 grand and allocate it as this, as indicated in this contract.
Well, you know, we might vote no.
That's correct. That is correct. So I think, you know, this is good. We'll go forward. We'll keep it as is. And, I mean, that's just my opinion.
Okay.
Yeah, I would withdraw the motion.
What motion was it? I mean, what motion? I'm sorry. I made the motion. And Manley, what?
Supported.
To support it, to actually approve the contract. Do we not?
So we don't need to do this at all?
We're not. No, we need to do it. Because, okay, so if we go back to August 29th, it said that unfortunately, the dates were incorrect. The motion was made by Otto and supported by Chick to pay People's Express a contract that should have been January 1st through 2018 to December 31st, 2000, January 1st, 2018, through December 31st, 2018, based on the lawyers approving the contract. Since the lawyers hadn't approved it, we haven't received the $10,000 from a People's Express. So we're saying the lawyer now has approved the contract. Once it's signed, we will get the funding for this period. We have not gotten the funding.
So back in August, to be clear, we asked the attorneys to make the contract, the contract was never made?
To review the contract, because there was an existing one. They wanted to.
And this was it?
This is what they reviewed, and this is what they have approved, but it didn't get to them, and then the approval. So, correct. So, you made a motion based on the lawyers approving the contract. The lawyer has now approved the contract, and now we're looking for the signature.
And the contract only calls for us to pay $10,000 annually, so we're not going to be paying them $20,000.
Right, right. So in that motion, didn't we, or did we approve who should sign it at that time?
No.
I think it's the township manager. Do you want me to read it again? I can read it again. From our August 29th, 2017, Otto moved, Chick supported, to accept the agreement with People's Express Incorporated for $10,000 to continue with the contract from January 1st, 2017, through December 31st, 2018, upon review by the township's legal counsel, subject to showing liability insurance increased from $3 million to $5 million. Motion carried. It was four to two to one with Docket and Bellinger opposed, Zelenok abstaining.
Okay. Well, the motion stands. I mean, are we okay to vote on that?
Well, I'm okay, but I'm just saying, it just seems like we've already approved the contract.
You have. I don't even know if you need this motion.
That's what I was wondering.
I mean, it may be. I'm not sure why.
That's what I'm saying, is that it's already been approved.
Yeah, I'm not, I'm not sure why it was here, other than maybe the township manager doesn't have the authority to sign something more, but it was approved.
Yeah.
Back then. So, it's just saying that the lawyers have approved the contract. We have shown them the $5 million. Everything's good.
You can amend it by saying, you know, that the township manager can sign the contract.
Right. Yeah, it, it actually has both of our names on the very back.
And that's how it was done in previous.
Previously, I guess.
Yeah, that's how it always.
Supervisor and manager. So I'm not sure if the motion's needed or not, but.
Okay. Well, we could, we could amend the motion to reaffirm the contract with Per, People's Express.
I have another point for discussion.
Okay, go ahead, Ms. Bellinger.
I wanted to say something about this whole thing here. While it is good for the community to offer discount transportation services for the elderly, the needy, and the handicapped, I would like to find a way that, to do so fairly, fairly. Right now, this board gives $10,000 a year of taxpayer money to an organization that does not contribute to the tax base, effectively squashing out other competing transportation services. Does that sound fair to you? I don't think it is fair. And I don't think it is fair for the township to play favorites. How does this encourage or grow businesses? This is a dilemma. One possible solution for consideration may be some form of voucher-type program, permitting the customers to choose. Maybe Lyft, People's Express, Uber, a taxi, a handful of companies to choose from. Like, again, this is good for the community to offer discount transportation, you know, services to elderly, needy, and the handicapped. But supporting favoritism, cronyism, is not in the best interest of the township. I would really like to see, we might want to entertain a different, a different approach. Thank you.
Thank you. Right.
So is there a motion on the floor?
The motion on the floor, yes, to reaffirm the contract. And Mr. Docket, you have a comment?
Yes. I would say, when, when this board just gives this money, they, they have no ambition to go out and try to get money anywhere else. I mean, when they know every year, we're going to hand them $10,000. And when we do hand them the $10,000, then they qualify for another $10,000 from the county. I think it's the county. And it gives no incentive whatsoever to try to get funding anywhere else. I am opposed to this. Thank you.
Thank you. Well, I'm not willing to cut off, at this point, some of our seniors and citizens who need this service. However, I would be interested in if, if either of you wanted to put together some sort of a proposal, or study what the options are for the next year. I'd appreciate that, if you could do that and bring it back to the board, because it would be interesting to me to see if there's more efficient ways to handle this. But at this point, I'm not willing to cut off People's Express for this year, because I think it's needed, so.
Good.
Can we have a motion? Yeah, we've already approved it, but we're reaffirming, so go ahead, and let's have a roll call vote. Chick?
Yes.
Otto?
Yes.
Manley?
Yes.
Chalkley?
Yes.
Zelenok's abstaining.
Abstain.
Docket?
No.
Bellinger?
No.
Thank you. That passes for yes, one abstain, and two no. Okay, thank you. All right, the next item is Ms. Zelnok's, our treasurer.
So I'd like to make a motion to request the approval of the security agreement between First National Bank and Howell and Northville Township from April 2018 to June 30th, 2018.
I'll support. Okay. Motion by Zelnok and support by Otto. Any discussion on this? Ms. Bellinger?
Yeah, can you please just give me a little summary? Why is this, this just a continuation? And what is the holdup, or just kind of give us a little heads up on what's going on? Just a little summary would be appreciated. Thank you.
This is the same agreement that was approved. So usually, we do it on a year contract with them, with First National Bank of Howell. They are starting to move to a different method of securing the assets. So the first one that we came before us was through March 31st. We are in the process of potentially changing our bank, and we thought maybe we'd have that contract in place on April 1st. That has not occurred, so we are extending it to the end of June.
So this is for, this is to open, to keep open the contract, to join, to move our assets over to the National Bank of Howell, First National Bank of Howell?
No, this is a contract to secure our assets with them, because any deposit is only secured up to $250,000. Being a municipality, we actually have a $500,000 deposit security, and this is to secure our assets beyond the $500,000, up to 4.5 million.
Okay.
Up to what?
Up to 4.5 million.
We got 4.5 million laying around?
Well, actually, we have a little bit more than that. That's correct. We do.
Or eight.
Okay.
Probably about six, probably about 5.8 million.
Mr. Burns, before he left, indicated that they do approve the form for this, and is just a continuation and change, so.
Thank you. Can we have a roll call vote now, please? Bellinger?
Yes.
Docket?
No.
Zelenok?
Yes.
Chalkley?
Yes.
Manley?
Yes.
Otto?
Yes.
Chick?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. That passes. Okay. The next item on our agenda is the second call to the public. Would anyone like to come and share their thoughts with us tonight? Please state your name, your address, and you have three minutes. Good evening.
Good evening. My name is Dale Brewer. I live at 11548 East Shore Drive, Whitmore Lake, Michigan. I'm a member of the Sewer District. I live here and participated in it. So I believe I have a little bit of a dog in this fight. I'd like to bring to your attention that Mr. Cooper Wasser has given you a very outdated presentation, incomplete and insufficient. Does not meet the legislative quality and the necessity that it had, it's to be in it, to continue with your SAW grants. You're jeopardizing your SAW grants by accepting this and going forward. It does not meet the EPA requirements. You have no, you do not have a capital budget with reserves. You have no replacement reserves. You have no operating reserves. There's no such thing as a true line budget. All of these things are necessary to maintain your SAW grants and to get your, continue to get your refunds. You have applied under this, and that's the purpose of your SAW grant. Please, please, please go back and look at it. Even in his own admission, he writes right in here, "We expect that the capital budget will need to increase in future years by a detailed plan, because there's no capital improvement study completed." You're a year and a half early on this budget plan, before you can actually incorporate it. His whole thing is nothing but a bunch of mishwash. There's also no tables presented in the documents that we received via the other. I don't know if you've got more tables someplace else. Are you referring to different tables that demonstrated the expenses? There's references in the plan to tables 10, 11, 12, 13. There's no tables to go further to support it. It's a very, very incomplete document, and you're jeopardizing your SAW grant. Unfortunately, he's 40 years, he's been around for 40 years. He's giving you information that's 20 years old. I'm sorry, I have to criticize the man, but it's a very factual thing. And again, there are other methods. I don't know how you plan to, if you do plan to do, move forward with the retention pond or the retention tank, how you're planning to finance it. I don't know if those costs have been included in anything that he has here. There's no way to tell. It's a, and, and again, there's no way to show what, how those costs are going to be incorporated in. Those costs could be also amortized in a future reserve plan, so that you have some monies on hand.
Fifteen seconds, Ms. Brewer.
I'm sorry, I'm going to keep going, because I'm, got to explain this to you, because apparently you don't listen. I've told you this before, that you should not be using the same people that are doing your work to do your grants, or to do your assessment study. Go to your, go to your planner, or go to your accountants. They do the study for Green, for Green Oak Township. You're going to get accurate details if you go to someone outside of Tetra Tech. They're not the people, they're, all they're doing is feeding their own mouth. And you really, really got to open up and look at this before you continue to feed them money. You're causing yourself a lot of anguish. It's part of the reason you're behind so far, is because all you're doing is looking at status quo. I can tell you that $200,000 is going to go out in two minutes if you have, if you have a major pump failure. I just, I, I'm, I'm appalled that you sit here and look at this. And again, there's a, there's a board that was supposed to be created between Northfield Township and Green Oak Township that needs to look at this plan before you can adopt it. There's no board. There's no interaction with Green Oak Township on this. It needs to be done. You've got to bring yourself up to date. Thirdly, and this will be my conclusion here, but you, you also mentioned the costs for, based on what the assessor was saying, as far as for the, the change to limited industrial versus agricultural. He didn't give you a complete explanation, I don't believe. And I'm not trying to criticize you, because I think the information he gave you is correct. The taxable value will stay the same and increase based upon the cost of inflation, or the, a maximum of 5% per year. The land values are going to jump up substantially if they're done as agricultural values, but it doesn't affect the taxes. So there is going to be an inequity, and there's also some major inequities in the system. I've already talked to him about it, so I'm not throwing him under the bus or anything here. But there's some things, again, as you look at this, so that you don't misinform your public as you're talking back to them. One is going to stay the same and increase accordingly. The other is going to go like this. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for your indulgence. I'm sorry.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Good evening.
Good evening. Udo Huf 6431 with Mole Lake Road. Thank you very much for your comments. I tried to explain this since many years here, since the beginning of the explanation, and Tetra Tech to the board about the Sewer District of Mole Lake Road. And my wife and I, we, in our fight to stay here in the Township, and to sustain our property, made even material sources available to the board, which got wiped off from the table, not even looked at. And it is just pathetic that, it's a banana republic, or we live in the United States. It's, it's more companies than just Tetra Tech around to be consulted. I believe so. And if you don't know, to support projects, then go out to the public and ask, maybe you can get support, how to run projects. Then I'm more than glad to help you out. That's my business, not even to ask and charge you for that. But what's going on here about Sewer District? We have to refinance our farm to stay here in the Township because of bad, bad decisions made through Tetra Tech and the board. And why is this going to happen to other people as well? It's unnecessary. So please, change your race, change even in the middle of the race your horse, but go out and shop. There is a lot of stuff you can do. There's a lot of material on the website from the government, from other sources, and we submitted a bunch of paper material to you, never looked at. So what's going on here about the Sewers District, and about the running over tank, and what's, what have you? It's just a, it's a farce. So please correct this, but quick. Thank you.
Thank you. Please send your materials in again. I don't know if I got them originally. Okay, thank you.
Hello, Dave Gordon, Helena Road. I'll be brief. I live right down the road from the area you're talking about, at 23 and Territorial. A mile south and a mile west of there. I've heard the supervisor on a number of occasions say that the US 23 corridor is an active area for development, but it's been very vague. And when I see that another $24,000 is being spent for an upgrading of the master plan, and when I read through what McKenna wants to do, it seems like there's a whole lot of things that are just going to be redone. And you were in charge of the 2012 plan. I don't know that your plan is so terribly inadequate that all these things need to be done, but you guys have already voted for that. Out of the $24,500, you've got one public meeting. And you said one of the reasons you wanted to have this adopted, and you made the motion to have this plan, was for more public input. Well, one public meeting may not be enough. And a special assessment district was done down there for $800,000, and now what you see is half the property's up for sale, because they can now get more money for their property, because it's got sewers. When you talk about light industrial, my question is, again, when you're looking at the master plan, are changes that you're considering ones that are being generated by citizens or outside developers? And I don't hear a bunch of citizens saying, yes, we definitely need to change a bunch of things down in Territorial and bring in limited industrial growth. And I haven't, I haven't seen a bunch of transparency from you, Madam Supervisor, in terms of, you know, there's references to businesses showing interest on the 23 corridor, but specifically, who's coming in? What are they trying to do? Where specifically are they trying to do it? I mean, I see a gravel pit taking place across from a business on Territorial right now. I don't think they're zoned for it, and they're already doing it. I mean, is this going to become a de facto industrial area because of lack of enforcement? I have no problem with reviewing the master plan that's required by the state, but we're spending a lot of money, and it's not really clear what we're spending it for. I would like to see a lot more public input and a more modern approach to reaching out to the public, other than simply repost it on our website and hopefully people will come see it.
Okay.
That's all I wanted to say. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Craig Warburton, 450 West Joy Road. Take off that headset, you're like in a really strange world. I have great concerns about what's going on in that corridor from North Territorial south along Whitmore Lake Road. I've watched that gravel pit develop, and I'm very concerned about the aquifer. I get my water a mile and a half from there. The businesses along that road seem to be growing wildly and uncontrolled. The nursery merchant, or whoever it is that's grinding up all the stumps, has an unbelievable amount of material accumulated. The trucking companies, the trailer companies, it's now a real strong industrial zone. I'm not sure that Alexander's is doing anything more than operating under a roadside farm permit as it is. I don't know that they have a permit for concrete and coolers and a grocery store. On another level, it'd be really nice if you'd provide Wi-Fi for your visitors, so we don't have to burn up our phones to follow along with that iPad and look at your packet. There's no network available that's not secured. It's really fun being back. See you tomorrow. Thanks, Rachel. Just on a parting note, People's Express is a 501(c)(3), and I think it's inappropriate to pit them against vouchers for for-profit companies. It's a charitable thing that this township has done for a long time, and it's what you do for the least. I won't quote the Bible. Bye-bye.
Thank you. Thank you. I would like to mention, if there are some complaints about inappropriate business practices going on, please make a report to our code enforcement, and they'll take a look at it. We are complaint-driven, so if you see something going on out there that doesn't seem quite right, we can take a look at that and see what we can do about it. I didn't think we were supposed to have any gravel pits along there either. So, okay. Okay, thank you.
It's ugly.
Okay. Well, we're working at code enforcement. It's challenging. All right, anyone else? All right, second, let's see, board member comments. Anyone have anything they'd like to say at this point? Mr. Dockett?
I agree with both Dale and Udo on Tetra Tech. They're the only people that's ever done sewers here. For 50 years, this board has given them no bid contracts. Just whatever they say they've got to have, this board votes for. What do you expect? They're going to just rip us off every time, when for 50 years we've done it? I mean, you know, let's get real here. Next thing, I'd like to have you buy and use local services and stores. Happy Easter. And I think we should mention that we're going to be closed Friday, half a day. We should have, I don't know what's on the web, but we should certainly mention in the other meeting. Thank you.
Ms. Otto? So I want to wish everyone a happy Easter, and just announce that the Kiwanis Community Eastery Hunt is going to be on March 31st on Saturday at 10 o'clock sharp, and it will be at the Old Middle School, and the Easter Bunny will be there. Won't it, Lenore?
Mister Bunny will be present.
Okay.
And I will just mention, it's free, so just, there's no charge.
Free, no registration at all. Just show up. Thank you. Ms. Chick?
I had three things. I wasn't at the last meeting, but I watched it, and there was a comment about the Planning Commission doing the capital improvement plan. The last capital improvement plan was done by the Planning Commission, and it actually came before the board that, and the board decided to take over the capital improvement plan for the very reason that the board interacts more often with the department heads the Planning Commission rarely does. So, in getting information from those people on the capital improvement issues that they see coming in the future, it was, it made more sense for the board to handle. Plus, the board handles the budget and the financing and things like that. So the Planning Commission was very happy to give it up to the board, but the board has not done it, and we need to get on that as well. I apologize. There is also a discussion at the Planning Commission about temporary holiday sales, and which brought up the issue of permit fees. And I think we need to bring our, I don't know when it's planned to come to on the board on their agenda, but I think we need to talk about that, because a lot of it's coming up with the Planning Commission. And one other thing, and what are we doing about the leak in the ceiling? Is there plans to fix that?
I haven't gotten an update on it, so I'll find out and let you know.
Okay. Okay. Anyone else here who'd like to make a comment? Ms. Manley?
Just again, happy Easter, and thanks to the public for their comments. And as far as the sewer costs and the SAW grant, Mr. Brewer, I'll definitely look into that. Kind of an interesting concept, so I value your opinion. And that's it. Thanks.
Thank you.
Yep. I'd just like to thank everybody for coming and making their comments. Maybe we could have our township manager, either at this meeting or maybe the next one, comment on the SAW grant. I know he's been following it closely to make sure we're in compliance, so maybe we could have an update on that.
Ms. Bellinger?
I do want to thank the members of the public for commenting tonight and coming out to the meeting, and thank you for bringing some important things that we should look into, Mr. Brewer. I appreciate that. And like the other board members, wish everybody a really wonderful, happy Easter.
Okay. Thank you all for coming out. Move to adjourn.
I'd like to say one thing. I know our end my turn, but to speak to you about, do we really need to have people come and get a permit to sell Christmas trees or bunny rabbits? I mean, give us a break. That is the worst idea I ever heard of.
I make changes.
I don't think we adjourned yet. Did you say cookies? Cookies to share? Hey, anybody want a cookie? My hubby brought cookies to share.
Oh, thank you. Oh, happy birthday.
Thank you.
Oh, you know what? No, those are too good. I took them for calories.
He's gluten-free, too?
I came to dinner on my way here, but... You said that, and I'm going, oh my God.
Yep.